Good evening and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for October 25th, 2016. We're grateful that you're here with us tonight. Before we call the meeting officially to order, we are going to have the invocation presented by David Holmes from First Church of Christ, Scientist on Soul Mill Road. We're glad you're with us again tonight. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Deputy Chase Hargraves. Is Deputy here? There you are.
Sir?
Deputy Duncan. Deputy Duncan. So none of this background pertains to you, huh? Do you want to hear about Hargraves? Well, Deputy Duncan, we're glad you're here. I know that you're from the Sheriff's Office just by the apparel you have, but we have a special treat for you. There's a group of scouts, a couple groups of scouts are going to come forward and help you lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're a scout and you're here and you have a uniform on, if you would come forward with a deputy and assist him in the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, boys, I know we have some girl scouts here that can help you if you need help. For those who wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee, Board of Commissioners, neighbors and friends of Cobb County. Tonight's invocation is handling fear and worry. And the best you can do in three minutes, so I'm going to keep it short and direct. All right, in Deuteronomy, we find that Moses puts forth a concept about God going before everybody to take care of them. And he says, "And the Lord he is that doth go before thee; he will be with thee, he will not fail thee, neither forsake thee; fear not, neither be dismayed." All through the Bible, you hear that word, "fear not." In other words, fear is something that is like a zero trying to be a one. It can't. It's a lie. You've heard that statement, "False evidence appearing real means fear." One of my favorite passages from Second Chronicles is by Jaziel. He was a prophet to King Jehoshaphat, and there really is a Jehoshaphat. I thought that was a made-up name when I was their age. But it says, "Be not afraid nor dismayed by reason of this great multitude," they're about to go into battle, "for the battle is not yours, but God's." So in other words, let God handle the problem. Don't do God's job. You're here just to stand still and witness it and look for it. We go further about a guy that knew a lot about courage, King David. You know David and Goliath, not much older than these young men. And he said in one of the most popular Psalms, the 23rd Psalm, "Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I shall fear no evil, for thou art with me." Again, God is with you. He goes before you. You are His child. He loves you. God is love. I keep saying that. Or John says it, excuse me. Now, the one that Jesus talked about is worry. And he says, "It's a lot better than I can." So if you don't mind, I'll just read what he says about worry. This is from Luke, and he says, "If then God so clothed the grass which is today in the field, and tomorrow was cast into the oven, how much more will he clothe you, o ye of little faith? And seek not ye what ye shall eat, or what ye shall drink; neither be ye of doubtful mind; for all these things do the nations of the world seek after, and your Father knoweth that ye have need of these things. But rather seek ye the kingdom of God, and all these things shall be added unto you." Let's have a few moments of silent prayer. And in praying for ourselves and families, let's remember the first responders here at home and our sons and daughters, brothers, sisters, fathers and mothers, and the military Jesus said, "Fear not, little flock, for it is your Father's good pleasure to give you the kingdom." Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you for being with us, and thank you Deputy Duncan for being with us as well. We'll now call this meeting officially to order. Earlier this today at our work session, we went through the materials presented in Tabs 1, 2, 3, and 4. Tonight, we will begin our evening on Tab 5, Presentations with four items, beginning with the first, Commissioner Pearl.
If I could have Alyssa, McKenna, Issy, and Kim, and Aunt, and Grandpa up here. Folks, these are triplets, identical triplets, that attend Rocky Mountain Elementary. And also, I'd like to invite the school board members that are here up with us, too. I think Mr. Banks, Mr. Chastain, and Brad Wheeler, y'all are here. I'm here with me. I can't tell you how touched I am by the tragedy that these three girls went through and turned into a positive story. And I'm going to let them tell you what they did, but their father was a City of Atlanta firefighter and a Georgia search and rescue. And he was killed by a distracted driver training for a triathlon in Louisiana. And I think y'all were in second grade then, in 2014? They're in fourth grade now at Rocky Mountain, nine years old.
Ten.
Oh, you're ten now? Oh. Okay, well, when the article was in the MDJ, you were nine, so I was going by that. But anyway, there's an organization in Atlanta called Kate's Club. And it's kind of a support group, a nonprofit, for kids that have lost a parent or a sibling. And these girls decided that they were going to raise money to support Kate's Club, because they had, I guess, gotten support from Kate's Club. So they turned $100 of seed money into $20,000 at a 5K race. So we're here to honor them tonight for their bravery, their courage, and their amazing fundraising abilities. I think we may all need to borrow them when we run again. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Gwen triplets Alyssa, McKenna, and Issy are 10 years old," it says nine years old, I'm going to have to change that, "Cobb County residents whose father a former Atlanta and Georgia search and rescue firefighter was tragically killed by a distracted driver while he was training for a half-triathlon. And whereas the girls held the first running-through-the-flames 5K as a way to honor their father and raise awareness of distracted driving and help Kate's Club, an organization that empowers children and teens facing life after the death of a parent. Whereas an organization called Kids Boost assisted the girls by giving them $100 in seed money and support along the way to get the race going. And whereas it was recently announced that the girls turned their initial $100 into $20,000. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor the Gwen triplets for their service and triumph in overcoming tragedy. We thank them for working diligently to help other children who have lost a parent. This is the 25th day of October. Congratulations, girls. Hold it up.
I just want to say thank you so much to Cobb County for letting us use the Safety Village and providing fire and police support for us while we were doing this race. It was a really huge undertaking for us, and I cannot say how proud I am of these girls and their ability to do that. Do you want to say anything?
Alyssa, but not Shana.
And I'll see you guys. So when I heard that I had that much money from the race, me and my sisters all were like, "What?" That was all said at the same time, and it was, I don't know how to...
And just say, "Thank you for supporting."
And thank you for supporting us. I just can't wait to thank you guys. And also pass them like you love them.
That's the one thing that we hope everyone takes away from this, is the fact that when you're behind a wheel of a vehicle, you are driving a dangerous weapon. And please remember that when you want to take that text, or you want to fiddle with your hair, or play with the radio, or eat your McDonald's, that you can take someone's life. So we always want to remind everyone to please pass them like you love them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, girls.
Item 2 is accepted donation from Superior Plumbing. Commissioner?
It's the District 3 show tonight. Could I have Jay Cunningham and Petey up here? Oh, Dr. Blue's here. And tell me.
Judy Newton.
Judy. Oh. And not Cathy, not Cathy Owen.
Looks just like you, Jay.
Oh, I know, on the shelter. Okay. I guess a couple years ago, we got this idea from a gentleman in Arizona, Chairman, to...
I think it was here from town.
Adopt animals for veterans. So it took us about a year to get things going, but thanks to Jay Cunningham and the folks at Superior Plumbing, you see Superior Plumbing everywhere, at the fair every year. They're the premier sponsor. They give iPads for teachers at the schools. They do a lot in the community. And tonight, they have donated $5,000 so that 50 veterans will receive companion pets from our Cobb County Animal Shelter. And we have with us tonight. If you're wondering why Petey, the wonder dog, is here, he was a rescue, too. And he's in training to be a service dog out here, okay? So we usually only have our own canines up here on stage, but Petey's an exception. He's a pretty special dog. So we also have with us Director Heaton, who's over Animal Control, Dr. Blue, who's our veterinarian at the shelter, and Judy Newton, who's Captain Owen's assistant. He couldn't be here tonight. So I just want to say thank you, Jay, for everything you do in this great community of Cobb, but especially for making this program come true for us. Now that we have the money in hand, we actually have a real check. Director Heaton has the real check. They don't trust me with the money. But now that we have accepted the check, we will start offering animals to veterans in Cobb. We're going to have a sign-up sheet or a form at our service center in Cobb on Powder Springs, and different organizations for veterans to get the word out. So if you're a veteran, or if you know of a veteran who wants a dog, the adoption fees are free through this program, thanks to Superior Plumbing. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take a second. It's kind of simple for me and the company, and we do do a lot of stuff, but I love, the company loves Cobb County, and vets are very special to me with my father. So it's kind of an honor, in a way, to my father for the vet piece. I grew up on base and in the military, and I don't think, from a very simple perspective, that we even begin to do enough for the vets. So this is just a small idea where the vets are deserving of so much more. And I don't want to thank, and I do love Cobb County, so this is good. Director. Thanks, Jay. Third item is presented proclamation to the President's Club Toastmasters of East Cobb. Commissioner?
Richie Deason and the Toastmasters Group. Thanks for being here tonight. This group is, well, most of you know about Toastmasters, but this group is celebrating 35 years. So we're honored tonight to have them with us, and I'm going to read your proclamation. "Whereas Toastmasters International is a world leader in communication and leadership development, members numbering 313,000 improve their speaking and leadership skills by attending one of the 14,650 clubs in 126 countries that make up a global network of meeting locations. And whereas the President's Club Toastmasters of East Cobb, chartered in October of 1982, has received the Toastmasters International President's Distinguished Club Award every year since 2003. And whereas this is the highest level of recognition awarded to clubs by Toastmasters International and recognizes clubs and members for their commitment and achievement in education, membership, training, and administration. And whereas the President's Club consists of group members with diverse backgrounds, careers, and interests, and the common goal of improving our communication and leadership skills in a highly supportive environment. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate the President's Club Toastmasters of East Cobb on celebrating its 35th anniversary with best wishes for continued success. This is the 25th day of October." So congratulations, 35 years. That's a long time to be in business.
It is, it is. Our club didn't start in Cobb County, but we thrived since we've been here, and it's through the support of all the other members and the community around us. And a lot of the people have trouble getting up and speaking in public, unlike those little girls that were up here before. They don't have any trouble at all, but it does hamper somebody's leadership skills, and our club is a supporting environment to help you grow both of those skills.
Do you want to introduce your members?
This is Jim Dawson, Lisa Goodman, Matt Miller is the president of our club, Charlene Anderson, Judy Anderson, and Rob McGoldrick.
Great. And you meet at the East Cobb Government Center?
East Cobb Government Center, first, third, and fifth Wednesdays of every month.
Okay, are you recruiting members tonight?
I am recruiting members. From 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock is our meeting time. We welcome guests. We don't put you on the spot in the very first meeting, but we're welcome to come and enjoy our club and see what it's all about.
Great, congratulations. And we'll get a picture, too, with the...
I'll mention that.
Can I get you on two rows?
I'll mention that.
The fourth item on the presentation is to approve the renaming of the Bells Ferry Park at 2334 Bells Ferry Road to Marine Lance Corporal Squire Skip Wells Park. In honor of his service and commitment to our county, I present a proclamation to his family. Commissioner Pearl.
Before I present the proclamation, we have to vote as a board to accept this renaming of the park. So I'll say a few words during the proclamation, but I'd like to ask the board to approve the renaming of Bells Ferry Park located at 2334 Bells Ferry Road to Marine Lance Corporal Squire Skip Wells Park in honor of his service and commitment to our country, and present a proclamation to his family.
Come on, Marine will second it.
It's my honor to second that, sir.
Call the question. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
And the school board members, if y'all would come back up. I think most of y'all know the story of Skip Wells. This is his mom, Kathy, and a good, close family friend, Teresa Bass, is with us and our school board members. Skip grew up in the Bells Ferry area, frequented Bells Ferry Park, went to Bells Ferry Elementary, J.J. Daniel Middle School, and Sprayberry High School. He was killed by a terrorist in the July 2015 Chattanooga tragedy. And, oh goodness. So I thought it was fitting that we renamed the Bells Ferry Park since he grew up in that area, frequented the park, and went to the schools in that area after him. Congressman Tom Price also is renaming or naming the post office on Sandy Plains in his honor as well. And it has passed in the House and is in the Senate now. And he regrets, but he was going to try to be with us tonight, but he had to go out of town, so he was not able to be with us tonight, but he sends his regrets, Kathy. So whereas Marine Corps Lance Corporal Squire Skip Wells was a Cobb County resident who attended Bells Ferry Elementary School, Daniel Middle School, and Sprayberry High School, where he was a member of the Junior ROTC and band before graduating in 2012. He was also a member of the orchestra and of his church, First Baptist Church in Woodstock, and volunteered at Kennesaw Mountain National Battlefield Park. And whereas Skip Wells grew up in the Bells Ferry area and frequented Bells Ferry Park on many occasions with his family prior to attending Georgia Southern University. And whereas Wells studied history at Georgia Southern University from 2012 to the fall of 2013. He then entered the United States Marine Corps in 2014, quickly earning the National Defense Medal, a certificate of appreciation, and the rank of E3. His unit was the 3rd Battalion, 14th Marine Regiment, 4th Marine Division, Marine Forces Reserve. And whereas Wells 21 was among five servicemen killed July 16, 2015, when a gunman conducted an ambush against unarmed troops at a Chattanooga, Tennessee Naval Reserve Center and Recruitment Center. And now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Lance Corporal Skip Wells and rename the Bells Ferry Park the Marine Lance Corporal Squire Skip Wells Park. This is the 25th day of October 2016. This is a brave mom that's been through a lot in the last year, year and a half. And we've been together at a lot of events in honor of Skip, and I just wanted to do this and think that it was fitting that we named the park. And we'll have an unveiling ceremony when we get the new sign that reads, "Squire Skip Wells Park." Okay? You want to say anything? No? Okay. Do y'all want to say anything? Anybody? No? Okay.
This takes us to Tab 6, the Centrus Park update. One item to provide an update on the status of Centrus Park. Mr. County Manager?
This is Chairman and Board of Commissioners. It's an honor to give you an update. I'm on a, they always have picture substitute for a thousand words, but I got a couple of data slides, and then I'm going to go into that. I had the pleasure of speaking to a group of commercial real estate agents off of Spring Road early in the week, and I look back at the battery, and it's overwhelming, and how things change at that particular site. You ready? Okay, to date, we've got $402,848,222 completed to the date, which equates to about 82.5% complete. We're averaging 1,050 workers on the ballpark site during the week, 406,4 workers on the ballpark site during the weekends, and averaging 104 fire workers on the mixed-use development as well. This is the battery and the base coat going around the plaza at Gate 5. So it's like putting the finishing touches on a project or a house or building. Go ahead to the next one. This is the hardscape, and the planning continues. There was a, what they call it, a homecoming celebration, a luncheon they had on August 31st to celebrate that, when they start doing their hardscapes and some other things as well. This is an area view looking west from the east parking deck. It's a good actual view, and this was taken on September 6. This is a view of the right field corner. This photo was taken October 20th, and this is a panoramic look from the bow from the right field. Okay, this is a view of the home plate with the field gravel going down in preparation for the field installation. So they're working on that gravel base around the home plate here on this particular photo. This is from the inside seating bowl looking to the left field. This photo was taken also on the 20th of October. This is a full circle from center field, bleachers. This photo was taken October 20th, and it was inserted from the Home Depot clubhouse. This is installation of some large fans and the ceiling fan installation to help keep the concourse and other areas cool during the, on hot summer days, and the sound systems or speakers are being installed. The next one is the monument guarding, sealing... The next one is the monument guarding ceiling, uh, nearing completion, um, on that one as well. This is some of the, uh, premiums, first premium seating installed, uh, and it is the terrace level behind home plate. This is a Braves clubhouse and shower area. Um, that is coming together well as well. That's just a view of what that is. Uh, they are preparing and on track to have their offices, administrative office for the Braves ready for occupancy on 12/9. Um, they plan to have those ready and that's on schedule. And this is they're working on, uh, furnishing out and, and, and fitting the, uh, Delta, uh, uh, club area. So that's gonna be the Delta Club area. The next one is gonna be the stadium club outside the deck with the lounge beyond, uh, the deck overlooking the left field. So it'll have, uh, an outdoor lounge and, and, and an indoor lounge as well. The next one is the Terrace Club, which is taking shape with the wood ceiling and the radio wall that's going in on that one as well. So everything is really coming together there. This is a bird's eye view at home plate and this was taken September the 6th. Uh, I was down there today and it's, it's really taking shape, changing every time you visit the site. The only other thing is public safety is continuing to work on the public safety plan, staffing, and assure a safe environment for the visitors, uh, to the stadium and employees. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's a quick update where we are and, uh, this one just comprised a lot of photos.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments from the board? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Tab 7 is Cobb County Transportation Agency, one item, to conduct a public hearing for implementation of the proposed Cumberland Circulator. Director?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. This item is to conduct a public hearing for implementation of the proposed Cumberland Circulator Service for Cobb Link, a service of Cobb community transit. The department recently hosted two more public information open house meetings to provide the public with additional opportunities to learn about the proposed new service and offer comments. The first meeting was held on October 11th, 2016 at the CCT Cumberland Transfer Center. The second meeting was held October 13th, 2016 at the CCT Mobility Facility. We request the Board of Commissioners to conduct a public hearing for implementation of proposed Cumberland Circulator Service for Cobb Link, a service of Cobb community, community transit.
Thank you. We will now open a public hearing. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak if you'd come forward. If your intention is to speak, I ask that you come forward and queue up in the aisle here for the purpose of efficiency.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Syffen, and, um, I've got a, a, a map of the, of the circulator route, and I, I'd like to discuss the route because I, I'm recommending that some changes need to be made in the route. Basically, the current, the route as currently proposed, I feel, addresses last mile. But if we're looking at, at the Cumberland area as live, work, play, high density, with all the apartments and other high-density housing you're putting in there, this route needs to address first mile and last mile. So, um, right now, the route would leave the transfer station and, um, just follow this route to the, to the Braves area, uh, cross I-75, uh, come up here to the hotel, make a U-turn, and come back down, uh, along Acres Mill. Oh, I'm sorry. It starts out coming down here through Riverwood Parkway and going up and coming back on Acres Mill. I believe several changes need to be made. First of all, um, just, uh, in this Windy Ridge area, you've got a huge amount of high-density housing that's been there for a long time. You have recently approved, there's, they're, they're recently built and more being approved, um, for some very high-density housing in this area. Actually, this one's an older complex, but these are new. I think you've got two new DRIs coming right along here. So, um, I would recommend, uh, you could do it several different ways. First of all, you'd have better service in here if you could negotiate to go through, uh, the Galleria area along that route. Rather than coming through here on, uh, Riverwood Parkway, if you just come on around, you've got two new, um, apartment complexes right here. I think this needs to be served. Then you could go up Cobb Parkway here and come through here, and then rather than making the U-turn up here, uh, continue on Interstate Parkway North, uh, come out on Paces Ferry and come down either through here or come all the way to Windy Ridge, pick up, provide service to all of this high-density residential here. And then, um, ultimately, you either need to come down here or really better possibly this way because it gets you close to Galleria right here, um, and then pick up all this high-density residential. Um, and so one way or, or another, you need to be providing more service to all this high-density residential. That will enable Cobb County to use the circulator to, to address both first mile and last mile. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Are there any other speakers wishing to speak for this public hearing on this agenda item? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Jim. Any, any other additional comments?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Tab 8, Community Development. One item is to conduct a second public hearing to solicit comments and input on the proposed amendments to our code. Director?
Good evening, Chairman. My name is Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. We are here to ask you to, uh, open the second public hearing on the October round of code amendments. Let me just briefly go through what is contained in the code and what is up for consideration before we open that particular public hearing, sir. Uh, as is part of our form, we hold two public hearings for, um, alterations to our code. The first public hearing was held on September the 27th. Tonight will be the second public hearing. The planning commission did provide a, um, public hearing and made a recommendation on the sign ordinance, which is contained in this book as well, um, which is up for consideration. Uh, there are three particular code changes that are contained in here. Uh, the first one, sir, is 78... Excuse me. 78-120, which is the vending ordinance, and this is a minor amendment to our vending ordinance, uh, in order to, uh, update the violation section. The second and largest change in here, sir, is 78-406, which is the accessory special event parking ordinance. And, uh, the purpose of the special events, um, parking ordinance is in order to, uh, make sure that public safety concerns for vehicles and pedestrians are taken into account as we finalize all the determinations for parking within the area around special events in Cobb County. And special events are defined, uh, in, 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 in a manner that is greater than just, say, the Braves Stadium or greater than KSU. It's, it's, it's looking at all special events in the county, so we're treating them all evenly. The, through coordination with the county attorney's office, community development, the county attorney, and public safety, both police and sheriff's office, are, have been getting together to review the code to provide some additional tweaks to what has been in the book and prepared in the book. As such, um, we are asking for an additional public hearing on this, so we have time for a little more coordination before we finalize this draft code for your consideration and get it out to the public for public digestion before, uh, your next meeting. So what we are asking for this particular one is to give us one more, cut two more weeks so we can finalize these changes, get them out to the public, so the public has an opportunity to review them, uh, and then we can hold an additional public hearing on November the 8th, which we've already provided the, um, necessary documentation to our legal organ to handle that. The third change, sir, is 134-375. This deals with the sign ordinance. Uh, recently, you've approved, uh, some changes to fees in community development, and this is just to align the code with the fee changes that you've made as it relates to the sign ordinance. So tonight, um, you, if you wish, you're able to, um, consider changes on the vending ordinance 78-120 and the sign ordinance 134-375. We are requesting an additional public hearing for the special event parking ordinance on November 8th at nine o'clock AM. And with that, sir, I'd ask you to please open up the second public hearing for the October code amendments.
Thank you, Dana. We'll do the, just that. Uh, we'll open the public comment, public hearing for public comment on the proposed official code of Cobb County recommended changes. Anyone wishing to speak, come forward. At this time, each speaker will have three minutes.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Chris May. I work for DDR Corporation, and we are the owners of Heritage Pavilion Shopping Center adjacent to the new Braves Stadium. Um, we are in support of the changes that you are proposing on the amendments. Uh, there is one area that we found in, in reviewing that we thought might need a little clarification. Um, so I've had my counsel come to maybe provide some lawyer terms for you, um, on this, and just, uh, maybe clarify a little bit on what events are defining events for us.
Sure. Mr. May, you said you work for whom? For your own?
DDR Corporation.
I'm sorry?
DDR.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Um, my name's Sabrina Atkins, and I'm with Baker Donaldson, um, a law firm in Atlanta. And I wanted to take a few minutes to raise some issues that we thought might need a little clarifying in the amendments as they're proposed. I have a memorandum that we drafted up. I don't know if that would be helpful if
Please.
you guys could have copies. Um, I've got two more. So essentially, um, as it's written, the only concern we have is that there, it's a bit confusing as to whether a permit would be required for, one permit would be required for the entire year, or whether a company or a business or a property owner would need to get a permit for each and every, for instance, Braves game. Um, since there's around 81 home Braves games, that could be, um, a tedious task for a property owner. And we don't believe that's the intent of the amendments as they're proposed, but we wanted to make sure there was clarification. So once these are implemented, it's very clear that you would only need one permit per year. Um, and that's essentially the gist of it. Um, if you look in the memorandum, the first section is merely what the amendments say now, and that there's three sections that we believe are a bit conflicting as to whether one permit would be required for the entire year versus each and every event. Um, and on the second page, we've got some proposed changes. Something as simple as just merely defining what an event is, and that could be defined as any event in the same type or character occurring within one year of the issuance of the permit, and that would cover, that, I think that would solve the problem. But there's also a proposed revision on striking in, um, Section 78, 406, 3D, any and all subsequent event, and any subsequent events from the same nature. It kind of removes that "and," so it's not required for the initial event and any subsequent event, which is what I think creates the confusion. Um, and that's essentially it. We just wanted to make sure that the amendments are, um, drafted appropriately so business owners, once they're implemented, can request permits and that permit be valid for the entire year.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Section 78, 406, as Dana indicated in his opening remarks, is one we're going to hold for additional, um, work to be done by our counsel and other folks, uh, to be brought back at our November 8th meeting for adoption. So make sure you get with Dana and that you're on his, um, distribution list when he sends out the revised, um, comments. But we'll pass this on to Dana and onto the county attorney for, um, consideration.
Great.
We appreciate your eyes looking at this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Seeing and none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, as Dana has expressed, uh, his recommendation is we move forward on Section 78, 120, and Section 134-375, um, and to hold Section 78, 406 consideration until after, uh, yet another public hearing in, in November 8th at nine AM, Board of Commissioners meeting, at which time we could take it up at that time. Um, so at this point, I'd bring forward a motion we approve, Section 78, 120, and Section 134-375 is presented in the agenda item by staff for adoption and, and direct staff to hold a, some additional public hearing on Section 78, 406 for the November 8th, nine AM meeting. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second? Any comments? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Tab 9 is our first public comment.
The first speaker is Stephen Gaynor. If you'd come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Steve Gaynor, and I'm president of the Cobb County Fraternal Order of Police on Ostel Road in Marietta. We represent just over 550 sworn officers from Cobb County agencies. Tonight, I would like to voice our concerns about the ongoing issues with recruitment and retention of Cobb County police officers. For more than two years, this commission has expressed that public safety is your number one priority, and you have been working to improve issues with attracting and keeping good candidates for the police department. You keep saying that you want to attract and retain the best and the brightest. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you that our members are not seeing that happening. You have fallen far short of the goal, and officers continue to leave the police department at an alarming rate. Although the numbers show there are 691 sworn positions within the police department, and 37 of those are vacant, we believe those numbers are incorrect and misleading. These numbers are misleading and do not take into account the large numbers of officers still in the training process. If you were to examine the numbers of open positions at each precinct and each unit, you would find that there are serious staffing issues, and will, and this will provide, uh, cause an issue in providing the fine citizens of Cobb County with the proper service they deserve. Over two and a half years ago, FOP President Bill Mull came before you and asked for your help in addressing the recruitment and retention issues within the police department. Your answer to that was to conduct a pay study, which was to take 18 months to complete. It has now been about 30 months, and we are still nowhere closer to knowing what that pay study determined and how you will address the problem that it reportedly found. At the time, we asked that the pay study just addressed public safety employees, as these were the areas where recruitment and retention were the issues. But you decided to throw all the employees into the mix. I believe that because of your action to include all employees in this study, you have now found that the $10 million that you set aside to address the issues is nowhere close to funding the needs. At the last commission meeting, you decided, some of you decided to table the problem until the new chairman takes office in January 2017. Given the problems that you have reportedly found, this is understandable as the identified pay raises and adjustments would be unsustainable without identifying some type of alternative funding or mileage rate increase or adjustment. However, these are speculations based on the bits of information that we have obtained since you have refused to release the pay study results, and we still wait, we are still waiting for our open records requests to be answered. As many of you know, recently Governor Deal announced a 26% pay raise for all sworn state law enforcement troopers, agents, and rangers in the state of Georgia. With SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta set to begin operation shortly, you need to take action immediately to address the steady losses of experienced and trained personnel from the public safety departments in Cobb County. I leave you tonight with our concern. If you do not begin to address public safety issues and issues surrounding SunTrust Park, the Battery Atlanta, and the steady outward flow of public safety personnel from Cobb County, the citizens and the visitors in this great county will be in danger of becoming victims to the increasing violence that we have seen moving into our county from the surrounding areas. You need to act, and you need to act now. Thank you.
The next speaker is Roberta Cook. Roberta Cook?
Good evening Chairman Lee and Commissioners. My name is Roberta Cook. I live in Mableton. I'm active in a citizen group called the Cobb Parks Coalition. Thank you. Our website is cobbparkscoalition.org. We are citizens from every Cobb County district who have united to support the $40 million Cobb County park bond funding. A referendum to buy new parkland in Cobb County approved by voters via the ballot box in November 2008. After 29 properties were recommended for acquisition under this program by the Commissioner-appointed Park Bond Citizen Advisory Committee, the program was suspended due to the downturn of the economy. As a result, no land was purchased for parks. Since the economy rebounded, we can thank you, Chairman Lee, wherever you are, and the Board of Commissioners, for reinstatement of the park bond program this year, January 2016. Our Parks Department prioritized this project to fulfill your completion timeline, which is today, October 25th. They invested months of valuable staff time processing property nominations to support the Commissioner-appointed Cobb County Parks Recreation Board, who invested their personal time in vetting properties. They produced a list of properties recommended for acquisition as parks. To purchase them, the program requires funding, $40 million of funding. Everyone has done their job except you, the Board of Commissioners who controls the funding. So far, we've seen every funding opportunity sabotaged by this board, along the avenues of taxes and budgeting. So why is funding a problem when you have consent from the voters, the very people you govern, gave you permission? I find it very ironic that almost every Commissioners' meeting on the agenda, there's a program that we always get an update on that was not approved by the voters. SunTrust Park, you heard it again tonight, we get an update. We never get an update on the Cobb County park bond, something we voted on, you never hear about at these meetings. Very ironic. So would you please give us an update on the Cobb County park bond this evening, and how you intend to finance the $40 million that we need to execute and acquire this new parkland? And for those out there that would like to learn more about the park bond program and the Cobb Parks Coalition, please visit our website. It's www.cobbparkscoalition.org. Thank you.
The next speaker is Norm Fag. Norm Fag. Mr. Fag?
I'm Norm Fag. I live in northeast Cobb County. And I just am here to basically reinforce what Roberta just said, representing Cobb Parks Coalition. I'd like to begin by saying thank you to the Board for getting the ball rolling now at long last on the purchase of parkland. And it's my understanding that a resolution might be forthcoming at the next meeting, and we'll be looking forward to hearing that. Even though the reported proposal is for less than the $40 million, we look upon that as encouraging and encouraging first step. But we certainly expect that the full $40 million will be spent to acquire parkland. So we're looking at that. This is not just a parks issue. This is a democracy issue. There was a referendum, and the referendum has not yet been honored. And so we're looking forward to seeing that it is honored. And on a side note, you may see in the audience here, some members of the Tritt family who wish to have their land become a park. And it's my understanding that perhaps they were a bit late in offering up their property for the park bond. But I would hope that some means will be found to acquire that property as well. And so really, that's basically all I have to say. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Stephen Bell. Stephen Bell?
Hi, I'm Stephen Bell. We live in Mableton, Georgia. We have moved here from Rome, Georgia. And there's two things I'd like to address. One is, several meetings ago, there was a slide that showed the millage rate for Cobb County, Gwinnett County, Fulton County, and DeKalb County. And it showed that our millage rate was significantly lower than the millage rate of the other four counties. And we were proud of that. We were proud that we were being conservative and saving our money, which I think is a good idea. But then, as I listened to the police officer saying that there aren't enough police officers, and a couple of meetings ago, that there's a computer center and a library and an ostel that's not been fully funded and not open as much as it is, and our concern about having the parks tells me that, you know, the choice of the Board to have a low millage rate is really interfering with the quality of life in our county. That's the first part. So I guess the conclusion that would be that the decision to have a low millage rate was our decision, and I think that decision needs to be reexamined. The second is, is there a timer so I know how much?
Right in front of you.
Right in front of me, of course. Thank you. I grew up in Camden, New Jersey, and I was a Cub Scout and a Boy Scout as Representative Rett Weatherford and Commissioner Otwer. And later, after I was a, when I was in college, I was a chemistry major, and I had on my bumper sticker of my car, some chemical symbols, barium, BA, AU for gold, H2O for water, and 64, which stood for Barry Goldwater. I was a Barry Goldwater supporter in '64. And I still am. I'm still a conservative. And I think about being a conservative, and I think about, well, conserving what? What does it conservatives do? And it seems that conserving the security of the people of Cobb County, securing the education of the kids in Cobb County, and securing the green space in Cobb County are what conservatives think about. So if we're going to call ourselves conservatives, and I still consider, even though I am supportive of other things, a conservative, conservative would mean conserving those things. And for us to have to battle for the police officers and the people wanting the computer center and ostel, and for us having to battle for the small amounts of money that are left from low millage rate seems unfair to the groups that are here. Because we should, these three groups, I don't remember the other groups, but certainly these three groups all should be funded. And it's not should be that you give, the police get it, but then we don't, or that we get it and the police. I certainly want all of us to get it, because that's what being a conservative is, in my opinion. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Harfoot.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name's Craig Harfoot. I've been not here. I haven't darkened your door in a year or more. And these same two topics were discussed the last meeting I attended. It's amazing. But I want to just refresh your memory, because the guy that passed your bond referendum was Sam Olens. And then everything collapsed, and he's the one that didn't implement. Sam Olens. He tabled it. He says we can't do it. There's not enough money. And it's ironic. He's now left the Attorney General's office, and he's getting $450,000 a year, or $430,000 at Kennesaw State as president. You guys need to go see him up there. Get a donation, you know? But anyhow, it's sad. It's really sad. But, you know, I don't know, I thought Isaacson Living was going in on the Tritt property, but I would rather see it a park. And I told somebody one day, why not make it an Indian burial mound? Because all that was Indian land. And cemeteries make good parks, people. They really do. And you can make a lot of money. And if you build it like a pyramid, you can put a lot of bodies in one spot and save the rest for parkland. I mean, these are good ideas, and they will make money, and they will get their money out of their property. But when he didn't buy it, you could have bought the property for nothing. Because once it all collapsed, you can buy land cheap. Right now, it's high again, because they didn't make them pay property taxes, the banks. When the banks were all shaky, they let them unload the property slowly, accumulate interest, and pay it off. You remember they laid off all the teachers? That's why. Because they were saving the banks. Now, the thing is, you don't want to buy parkland now. The prices are up again. They'll be cheap again. You watch. Watch this presidential election. It's like, you vote for A, we lose. You vote for B, we lose. America loses in this election, people. And I, you know, I hope the Almighty has a hand in it, because if either one of them takes office, we're in big trouble. And, you know, the media, they talk about the corporations. They own both these people. They created Donald Trump, and he's up there saying, hey, the media loves Hillary. I mean, this is the biggest puppet show going, you know? And anyhow, I wish that everybody would get it and vote for the two governors or something. But, you know, I know, I've talked to enough people, I know it's not going to happen. You know, it's just not going to happen. But we're in trouble, just like they're in trouble. I'd rather see the police get the money than go to the parks, though. I'll tell you, things are going to be bad. But, you know, the millage rate, now that's the biggest lie that Olens ever told. He tells you, we lowered the millage rate, so we lowered your taxes. I don't know about you, but they raised my assessment on my property from 230 to 280. And I said, whoa, the houses are sold next door. And I did the, and they tore it down, and I did the calculations. And I said, well, you shouldn't, if it's apples and apples, same kind of property on septic, it should be around 230. I wish I had the numbers. But anyhow, they go, no, no, it's more than that. So, I mean, when you're telling us that you think they should raise the millage rate, that's the honest way. But they keep saying somebody else raised the assessment, but it's because the banks slowly unrolled the property, and they screwed us all. Because, you know, basically, everybody could have bought something cheap when it was all crashed. But now they're talking 100% mortgages. Then your comps will go up. It's the only way they can creep up the values. So you really got to know what's going on. It's like, you got to understand. If they kept our assessments of what we bought our houses at, sure, raise the millage rate. Be honest. Tell us when you're raising our taxes. But to let them play this game with the banks and interest, I mean, they're not giving us any interest to live on. We're just, but then, so they loan the money out cheap, and that's the only reason people can buy a house. But the kids can't even buy furniture. Thanks.
Thank you. So the next tab is tab 10. Commissioners, we had a robust conversation yesterday about item 23 and stuff, and some of the commissioners have decided that we probably need to pull this for two weeks, which is with a concurrence of finance to get those answers as to, that were brought up yesterday concerning the distribution. So item 23 will be removed from consent. But I bring forward a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Call a question? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Yes. Oh, thank you. Bill, give me a minute. I know there's a lot of Boy Scouts here today, so I would like to take a couple of minutes, if there's any Boy Scouts that have any questions for us, if they'd come forward, and at this time. Come up to the mic, sir. Hello, over here. Watching yourself on TV. Get up on the, all right, pull the mic down so we can hear you. Give me your name, your troop, where you're located, and what your question is.
Hello, I'm Sergio King, and I'm in PAC 75. I have a question about the new baseball stadium.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was thinking about, how are they going to manage the parking for the baseball stadium?
Carefully. Very carefully. The Atlanta Braves are coming up with a comprehensive planning document to address parking. Thank you for your question. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Georgia O'Neill, and I am from PAC 744.
George, do me a favor. Take your hat off. Take your hat off. Thank you.
My question is, why wouldn't the community want to buy Miss Tritt's property to expand East Cobb Park?
Not sure they don't want to. Thank you. Commissioner Otter, you want to take that one?
You notice that that one came over here real fast. It's not a matter that the community doesn't want to buy it. There's a whole lot of properties that were nominated, and there's this certain amount of money. And so the commission asked a group of citizens to kind of look at all the properties that were potentially able to be bought. And they just recently
Folks, 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 folks.
They just recently gave the list to the Commissioners, and we're still looking at the list.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Seth Huggins. I came from PAC 744. I have a question about what responses do you have about the drought?
Excellent question. Boy. So Cobb County has been one of the counties that has led the state in our conservation efforts. Kathy Wynn from the Water Department has just done the extraordinary job of education and implementing programs to reduce water. And although we have more, significantly more people living in Cobb County than we did a decade ago, we actually are using less water today than we were a decade ago. This is helping both the county manage its water very, 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 very well. But it's also helping in our existing lawsuit we're having with Florida in Alabama, as we're able to demonstrate that we're conserving water as opposed to just being careless with it. And so we've been very proactive, very involved in making sure that conservation is key, and trying to make sure that people like you turn the water off when you brush your teeth and wash your hands anymore. Sound good?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Next gentleman.
Hi, I'm Samuel, and I have a question on the Braves baseball stadium. When you buy the When you buy the materials and build the stadium, does that put us in debt? And does that affect our school equipment?
Very good question. The first part of it is, to move forward on the project, we had to have a funding statement which was sustainable, and we have that. There is bond debt being incurred, but there's a dedicated funding sources to offset that debt payment every year. The complete opposite is happening as it relates to school. The project itself will generate close to $10 million over the next, per year, over the next several years. Is it $10 million a year or $10 million over five years? Kelly? Harvey? $10 million a year is being generated in additional revenue in South Stock Riddle specifically for the school system, so the project's actually going to help the school system as opposed to be detrimental to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
My name is Alex Bitter. I'm in PAC 744. My question is, what is your most important responsibility?
Going home every night. As a chairman, the most important responsibility I have is presenting a balanced budget every year that the, these commissioners can support and that, and the community, for the most part, approves in the direction we're heading. For the district commissioners, I believe the most important responsibility they have is to make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Alex Strickland, and I was wondering if you guys could build a skate park at East Cobb Park?
Absolutely not.
Aw, man.
Think your mom would be up for that? There's a great skate park up in Kennesaw. Mr. Weggus, I'm sorry. Mr. Weggus, please. Texas, the tab 11. Nine items.
Good evening, again, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Our first item is to approve a final concept plan for the South Barrett Reliever Phase III, project number X 2407. South Barrett Reliever Phase III consists of an extension and widening of Shala Valley Drive, Greer Chapel Drive, across I-75, terminating at the intersection of Roberts Court and Barrett Parkway. Propulsion improvements include construction of a bridge with no interstate access over I-75, and the addition of a roundabout at Greer Chapel Drive and Roberts Court. The total project length is approximately 0.81 miles. The department presented an agenda item at the October 25, 2016 Work Session Meeting, providing information on the final concept plan for South Barrett Reliever Phase III. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the final concept plan for the South Barrett Reliever Phase III, project number X 2407, and authorize the department to proceed with the project.
Commissioners.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item two, please. Okay, come on back, come on back. Hang on. We haven't moved on. Go ahead, make a comment.
I just wanted to say, yeah...
Is your mic on?
I attended the open house, the Public Information Open House, which was well-attended, and this is a great project and another example of a good public-private partnership with the Town Center CID. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner, well said. Item two.
This item is to approve a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering oversight of Windy Hill Road, Terrill Mill Road Connector, State PI number 0013967, Cobb County, project number X 2401. Windy Hill Terrill Mill Road Connector is an approved project in the thoroughfare and immobility improvements component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program, and is designated as State PI number 0013967. The department is in receipt of a memorandum of agreement from the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering oversight of the project. GDOT has estimated the oversight fee for this project will be $20,000. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering oversight of Windy Hill Terrill Mill Road Connector, State PI number 0013967, Cobb County, project number X 2401. Authorize the payment of an engineering oversight fee in the amount not to exceed $20,000. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ay.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item three, please.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with EZ Bor Construction, Inc., for construction of Circle 75 Parkway Drainage Improvement Project's Culvert Project Number D 2820, CCDOT Contract Number 000823. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component in the 2005 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with EZ Bor Construction, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $125,236.01, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with EZ Bor Construction, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $125,236.01 for construction of Circle 75 Parkway Drainage Improvements and Culvert, project number D 2820, CCDOT Contract Number 000823, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one note I'd, I'd like to kind of point out to the folks watching and the people in the audience, that this agenda item and the next six are all projects coming in under budget, and so they're deductive amounts. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item four, please.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., for intersection safety and operational improvements of Six Flags Parkway at Lee Industrial Boulevard, Six Flags Drive, project number E 3070, CCDOT Contract Number 000676. Six Flags Parkway at Lee Industrial Boulevard, Six Flags Drive, is an approved project in the Safety and Operational Improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $555,111.09, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $555,111.09 for intersection safety and operational improvements at Six Flags Parkway at Lee Industrial Boulevard, Six Flags Drive, project number E 3070, CCDOT Contract Number 000676. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes. I'd like to recognize that that is a hefty dollar amount that has been saved on that project due to changes in the configuration. I believe there was an additional lane that was considered the initial concept. With that, motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Next time, please.
This item is approved change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, for pedestrian, pedestrian improvements on West Sandtown, West Sandtown Road Sidewalk, project number E 7310, CCDOT Contract Number 000874. West Sandtown Road Sidewalk is an approved project in the sidewalks component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $117,119.83, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $117,119.83 for pedestrian improvements of West Sandtown Road Sidewalk, project number E 7310, CCDOT Contract Number 000874. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Another well-managed project. Thank you. Motion to approve as presented.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item six, please.
This is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, for construction of pedestrian improvements for 2015 Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act Compliance Sidewalks, project number E 7550, CCDOT Contract Number 000873. 2015 County, Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act Compliance Sidewalks is an approved project in the sidewalks component of the 2011 Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $77,598.30, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $77,598.30 for construction of pedestrian improvements for the 2015 Countywide Americans with Disabilities Act Compliance Sidewalks, project number E 7550, CCDOT Contract Number 000873, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
I bring this forward in the form of a motion, is there a second? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item seven, please.
This is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, for school zone safety and operational improvements on Old Stylesborough Road at Picketts Mill Elementary School, project number E 8100, CCDOT Contract Number 000947. Old Stylesborough Road at Picketts Mill Elementary School is an approved project in the Safety and Operational Improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $17,423.71, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $17,423.71 for school zone safety and operational improvements on Old Stylesborough Road at Picketts Mill Elementary School, project number E 8100, CCDOT Contract Number 000947, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item eight, please.
This is to approve change order number two final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., for intersection improvements on John Ward Road at Cheatham Hill Road, project number E 3060, CCDOT Contract Number 000785. John Ward Road at Cheatham Hill Road is an approved project in the Intersection Safety and Operational Improvements component of the 2011 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number two final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $59,440.17, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number two final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., a savings to the project in the amount of $59,440.17 for intersection improvements on John Ward Road at Cheatham Hill Road, project number E 3060, CCDOT Contract Number 000785. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item nine, please.
This item is to approve change order number one final to the contract with Tidwell Construction Company for Richard D. Sailors Parkway Bridge, project number X 2124, CCDOT Contract Number 000976. Richard D. Sailors Parkway Bridge is an approved project in the Bridges and Culverts component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvement Program. Construction is complete, and change order number one final to the contract with Tidwell Construction Company, a savings to the project in the amount of $6,336.26, is requested due to variations between the original and final planned quantities. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Tidwell Construction Company, a savings to the project in the amount of $6,336.26 for Richard D. Sailors Parkway Bridge, project number X 2124, CCDOT Contract Number 000976, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Director.
Thank you, sir.
Tab 12, Public Services Agency. We've got four items.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. This evening, we have five, uh, four items. First item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with WE Contracting Company Incorporated in amount not to exceed $212,563 for construction services related to 16 softball field dugouts at Lost Mountain Park. This comes under the 2011 Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item two, please.
Next item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Reeves Young, LLC, for pre-construction and overhead general condition fees in amount not to exceed $330,679 for construction manager at risk services for the replacement of existing exhibit halls with the new exhibit hall at Jim R. Miller Park. This comes under the 2016 Parks SPOS Program. Ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call a question. Motion carries five zero.
Third item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve the ranking of the top qualified firms to provide professional design and construction and administration services for conversion of athletic fields to synthetic turf fields at Mud Creek Park, Hubert Park, and Terrill Mill Parks. Ask that you authorize the Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs staff to negotiate final scope and fee with Gaskin Surveying Incorporated, the top-ranked firm. If these negotiations do not result in an agreement, authorize park staff to negotiate with a second-ranked firm, and so on till an agreement is reached.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion, is there a second? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Item four, please.
Final item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Osprey Management, LLC, for design, build, construction services to rebuild the maintenance building and adjacent pole barn at Noonday Creek Park. This comes under the Georgia State Contract NJPA EZIOC, number GA03-2-072115-0ML, in an amount not to exceed $365,999.50. Appropriate funding for demolition costs of $17,000, third-party project and special inspection costs of $47,000, equipment and supply replacement costs of $306,209.50. Establish the project accounting in the Public Facility Projects Fund, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents. If you remember, this is from the fire at Noonday Creek Park, and this is a replacement of those facilities that got burned down.
And that fire was a result of...
July 4th fireworks.
We want to thank the state for allowing it to happen.
Yes.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes. I, I too have to comment on this, because it's a very costly mistake by, we don't know who did it, but someone who was in the park. The park was closed, and they're not, you're not allowed to shoot fireworks on a public property like that, in a park. So I'm sorry we have to replace all that, the building and the equipment that was inside, but what we have to do. So I make a motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So tab 13 is County Attorney's Office to bring forward an item that was held from Please.
This item is to authorize master right-of-way agreements with wireless providers for mini-cell communications equipment on the county's right-of-way on existing utility poles and county traffic lights and traffic streetlight poles in the form substantially similar to the attached agreement, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Just for the record, you are...
I am sorry. I'm Julie Livingston with the County Attorney's Office.
Thank you. Is there a Commissioner, wish you to bring a motion on this? Commissioner Ay.
I'll make a motion to authorize a master right-of-way agreement with certain wireless providers for mini-cell communication equipment in and upon the county right-of-way.
Second.
Any other comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero, and that gives me authorizations as put in the book to sign all the documentation. Thank you, Counselor. 14, public comment. Our second public comment, we have nothing. 15, appointments, we have one item. Commissioner Ay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I make my motion, I just want to recognize that Roger Phelps is in the audience, has been here the entire time, and has also been in this position for eight years, a thankless job, Board of Tax Assessors. He currently serves as the chairman, and I just want to express my profound thanks for the job that he does, and make a motion to reappoint Roger Phelps to the Board of Tax Assessors.
Second, second. Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Roger, where are you? Stand up. We appreciate you very much, and this is a very difficult, complex, challenging position you've taken on as chairman and as board, and not everybody is qualified or willing to do so, and the fact that you're both is greatly appreciated by this board, so thank you very much, sir. Our next tab is tab 16. Harvey, yes, Roger. Come on, come on forward up here to the, to the mic, please. I'm sorry, sir.
Commissioners and especially Commissioner Ay, I appreciate the reappointment and the opportunity to continue to serve the taxpayers of Cobb County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Tab sixteen is Commissioners' Public Address. Commissioners, I wanted to just express some comments. Yesterday, you know, we had an executive session as a relation of the Parks Bond Program, and we had asked that an update be provided, and I've been provided with that update that we can share with the community. And it reads as follows. Yesterday, the Board of Commissioners met in executive session to receive our, receive from the Recreation Board, properties recommended for future acquisition by the Board of Commissioners if and when the board moves forward with the 2008 Parks Bond Program and/or a new Parks Bond Initiative. The Board of Commissioners will tour properties and continue our assessment, their assessment of the extensive and thorough recommendation presented by the committee and then begin consideration of the individual properties. Neither the nominated properties nor the recommended properties will be released to the public at this time to ensure that the properties can be properly reviewed and that the potential purchase of real estate will remain economical for our citizens. We are committed to proceeding in a manner that does not bring the property owners any unwanted attention or artificially drive up land values. This process will take time, but we are committed to identifying the best real estate at the most economic price to add to our over the extensive park properties for the citizens of Cobb County. The Board of Commissioners wishes to thank the volunteers of the Cobb County Recreational Board for spending tireless hours and considering a total of more than a hundred and fifty nominated properties. Their service to our community and citizens is greatly appreciated, and I know the full board supports that statement. So with that, I'll turn to Commissioner Otte for comments.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First off, I'd like to congratulate Wheeler High School student Jinkia Sawant, who is one of nine high school students in the world to be awarded an internship to work alongside a Formula One professional engineer. He will be mentored for one year with the chance to, to it being extended for up to four years. This could potentially lead to into a job with the F1 team. Congratulations to him and to Wheeler High School's Formula One team. Second, I would like to welcome, I would like to welcome the newest Zaxby's to East Cobb located on Delk Road across from the Publix. On October seventeenth, they had their grand opening and put up our version of the big chicken. Its lips don't move, but, and also they were welcomed by fanfare from the Brombie Elementary Drum Corps. In keeping with the tradition that I like to do is in recognizing the fantastic public safety we have, on September twenty-third, at approximately five fifteen, Officer Andrew responded to a home in Marietta for a welfare check. During his check, he noticed there was a female down inside in need of assistance. He forced entry into the residence through the rear door. The house appeared to be in the condition consistent with a hoarder, and despite the female saying she was okay, EMS stated she would not have survived another twenty-four hours. She went with metro ambulance to the hospital. Officer Andrew secured the back door and let a trusted neighbor know of the damage in case she was gone for an extended period of time. After the incident, the neighbor wrote a letter praising Officer Andrew and said that Officer Andrew, with limited information, was able to put together a picture of what had led to the incident and how to resolve it. She said that Officer Andrew was candid and sympathetic and that he is a wonderful asset to the force. So I want to extend thank you and a good job to Officer Andrew. Also, as a reminder to the folks in East Cobb, you've seen the message boards, you've seen the traffic cones. There is an upcoming road closure with the East Cobb Pipeline. Currently, they're walking, working in front of Terramill Park. A second crew will begin working at Indian Hills Parkway and Cove Drive on October twenty-seventh. And absent any rain, they assure me they'll be done in time for trick-or-treating. Once they're done there, they will continue to move westbound, and the crew in Terramill Park will continue to work eastbound. Although this is the most difficult part, I will tell the folks, this is pretty close to the final part. So the light is at the end of the pipe. And for maps, please make sure you sign up for my Friday update. Every week, we tell you what's really going on with that. And finally, I just want to thank and congratulate the Micro Center Store on Powersbury. They were the recipient of three awards. They won a top prize of twenty-five thousand dollars and two of second place of ten thousand dollars. And it was, they were competing against the likes of Walmart, Best Buy, and some of the other big competitors. But what's unique is that they gave the ten thousand dollar prize money to Powersbury Elementary. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I first would like to thank the Korean Covenant Presbyterian Church for the lunches that you took to Precinct Four to top off, to cap off Public Safety Week, Public Safety Appreciation Week. You can see here, they delivered a lot of great tasting food for our officers at Precinct Four. And I'd also like to thank Major Kwan and his staff there for all that they do to keep us safe in the community. I'd also like to thank the American Business Women's Association. They had me as their guest speaker last Friday. It was a great time, and I appreciate the outstanding community service award that they presented to me. Thank you to Simpson Middle School and Lassiter High School for sponsoring the U.S. Marine Band's two thousand and sixteen concert last night at Lassiter Concert Hall. It was outstanding, and I'm honored that I was able to attend. And also thanks to all those that attended the South Barrett Reliever Open House and the Town Center CID Master Plan Update over the last two Monday nights. It was well-attended, and I think a lot of information was shared on the vision and, and projects for the future in the town center area. Also, congratulations to Barbara Hickey and the Diaper Day Committee for collecting a hundred thousand diapers yesterday at the square for those in need. This is the eighth year for Diaper Day, and it's always been successful. But I think they went over their goal last night. So congratulations. Few announcements, early voting is underway. There's flyers in the back with the schedule for the locations and the hours. There have also been a few polling precinct changes. So if you have any questions about your current precinct, you can visit cobelections.org, and that will give you the information of where your precinct is. Also, on Saturday, November fifth, from ten to four, at the Animal Shelter will be the next Forever Fest. You can come and take home your new best friend, special rates for adoptions, and lots of vendors will be on hand as well. On November sixth, Sunday, at Lassiter Concert Hall, the Cobb Wind Symphony will be hosting their annual Veterans Day concert. It is free, open to the public, and it starts at three PM at Lassiter Concert Hall, twenty-six oh-one Shalaford Road. And also, we invite you to come and share your thoughts on the Cobb 2040 Plan and the future of Cobb County on Thursday, November seventeenth, from five to eight at the Cobb Civic Center, the newly renovated Cobb Civic Center at five forty-eight South Marietta Parkway. And there's more information on the website.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Have a few announcements tonight. Just wanted to recognize our fleet management. They were nationally recognized as a Green Fleets Award, ranked number twenty in all of North America. That's a great accomplishment and number one in the state of Georgia. So our fleet management's doing a great job. There's a Fall Festival of Fun at JR Miller Park on October thirty-first, which I believe is Halloween. And that will be from four to seven PM, and that's presented by Cobb Parks and Safe Kids and 4H. And if any of you are interested in becoming a CERT, which is Cobb, Emergency Management Agency, is putting a citizens' emergency response team together, the initial training, the class dates and times are on our website, but November fifth, twelfth, and nineteenth, they're from nine to five, and they meet on Saturday for three sessions to become a certified emergency response technician. The arts station at Big Shanny in Kennesaw has having a holiday gift box market. That's November third through the eighteenth, so you might want to stop by for that. And the Young Farmers Club in Cobb County is having several meetings, and check our website for that as well. And Senior Arts and Craft Extravaganza, which is November the eleventh, and Saturday, November the twelfth, at the Senior Wellness Center are some things that you might want to check out. There are going on a lot of activities this holiday season going on in Cobb County. And I too would like to recognize some public safety personnel from Cobb County. Today, I was honored to attend the West Cobb Business Association, where they honored four of Cobb County's finest. The first was Cobb County Sheriff's Deputy Jeff Porter Potter for being recognized by this business association for his capture of escaped murder suspect from the courthouse area in December. Followed that by firefighter Ian Martin, who went on a heart attack call, revived the victim, and the great part about that was the victim actually presented the award to firefighter Martin. And then we had a recognition from Precinct Five Police Officer Doug Gunlich. He went above and beyond, similar to what Commissioner Otte reported. He found an elderly man that was broken his hip in his home and did a welfare check. Actually, found an entry into the house, found him there, stood with him while we had rescue come in. Come to find out, he'd been left at home, and then he contacted Crimes Against Persons for elderly abuse. So he did a bang-up job there. So a great effort by Cobb County Police, Precinct Five, Doug Gunridge, Gunlich. Also, nine-one-one was honored. And nine-one-one operator Emily, and I had an old senior moment, I can't remember her last name, but she did a great job. She talked a family through CPR. The mother had a heart attack, and I talked the father, the husband, through it. And they presented her the award, which was a very moving ceremony. So all of the time, we have great public safety personnel here. And I'd also like to comment on the Micro Center on Powersbury that Commissioner Otte did. They, they've been a recipient of a lot of my money, so I'm glad that they donated some of it back. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and good evening. Would like to recognize a number of past events that we've had. Want to thank Public Safety First for the Public Safety Blitz that we held at the South Cobb Recreation Center on October fifteenth. It was certainly enjoyable, and I almost walked away with a dog. They're now only fifteen dollars to adopt, and they had a mobile adoption center. And there was this beautiful black Labrador that was just calling my name. But I could not build consensus in the Cupid household, so.
How long is fifteen dollars?
Somebody else got it. You know, you snooze, you lose, but that was a beautiful dog.
You're better off, trust me.
I got the money next time.
We didn't hear that. Also, would like to thank the Girl Scouts for allowing us to convene the Town Hall Meeting of District Four at its side off of Allen Road in Mableton. They were a gracious host, as they've always have been, and provided Girl Scout cookies and other sundry items, and we really appreciate that. Would also like to thank Parks and Recreation, Joe Laman with Cobb Libraries, and Images Enterprise, Brothers Destiny Grooming Foundation, and The Next Steps for hosting a park spelling competition. Also want to thank other various persons of Cobb County who were there. I think we also had Public Safety that was there represented on a very frigid, uniquely frigid day this year on Saturday. But it was nice seeing the kids participate, they worked very hard, and I hope this is something that the community will do annually, if not more. We have a number of events coming up, some of them which were addressed by the Commissioners. One event that, there's a few events that I'll highlight, and then I'll direct you to just, please sign up for my newsletter because there are a lot of, there's a lot of good information in there. But Powder Springs will be hosting a Wild Horse Community Fall Festival, and that will be at the Community Green Space on Hopkins Road between Hopkins Court and Wild Horse Drive. And there'll be community resources, candy giveaways, family fun and music. Also, we will have a jazz, R&B, and soul explosion at the Mabel House Barnes Amphitheater this Saturday at six PM. You will see the other Lisa Cupid there because I will be jamming to Loose Ends, a group that I grew up with in the, in the eighties, and I just don't even know what I'm going to do with myself when they start singing. He's going to have a video camera there. Let's see, there's going to be a HOA boot camp. We hosted one here in South Cobb, but there's going to be one with a number of various leaders in metro Atlanta at the Georgia International Convention Center. And that's going to be on Saturday, November fifth, and there'll be a number of workshops that will be quite informative for those of you who are in leadership in your HOA or just, or just in a HOA and have questions about its governance. Another important matter, excuse me, I forgot to share, is that we will have a meeting coming up fairly soon for design guidelines in the district, which will help revitalize a few of our main corridors in the district, inclusive of Veterans Memorial, Highway, Mableton Parkway, and Austell Road. Our kickoff for the roadways in Mableton will be Thursday, November third, at six thirty PM, and that will be held at the Mabel House Arts Center. There's a lot of job information in the newsletter. I strongly encourage people to please sign up for it. There's job postings, and there's also going to be a job fair with MSC, which is a North American distributor of metalworking and maintenance repair and operations. They are having a job fair for its Mableton Call Center and Customer Fulfillment Center. They are actually looking to hire a number of permanent full-time, full-time, permanent full-time positions. Please bring a resume and be ready to interview by going to the South Cobb Regional Library Thursday, October twenty-seventh, that's in a couple of days. Aside from events, I do want to address a few comments here tonight. I do want to share with staff that it is my understanding that the pay-in-class study will be coming back for consideration at our next meeting in November. I'm hoping that's the case. It was not my desire to see it delayed tonight. But if that is what it takes to build adequate consensus to move it forward, then I will be supportive of when that comes back before the board. And want to share that while this may seem, is very important for us to support our employees, that translates directly to the quality of service that's provided to you, our constituents, and our stakeholders of Cobb County, which is why this is very important for us to consider and hope there will be adequate support in moving that forward. I also want to share that we did have the opportunity to view the parks' properties and appreciate all of the work that the authority has done to review that. We still have work ahead of us, but I believe that there is commitment to move forward on that and hate to be so cryptic and not sharing more details, but there's just a lot of information shared. And right now, the board is taking time for us to flush that out, but I believe that there is continuing support to move that forward. Those are my comments.
Thank you. So earlier tonight, Mr. Hankerson, we saw three young ladies triplets who were here to be celebrated for their success in raising money in memory of their dad. Who was what?
An firefighter in Georgia, a search and rescue.
Right, and he was killed while he was training for a road race by a distracted driver. So what do we have next Monday? Hundreds and thousands of young kids running to and fro throughout the streets with one thing on their mind, as my granddaughter would say and said, who doesn't want free candy? Folks, I want to remind you on behalf of the public safety community and parents with kids that are going to be out trick-or-treating next Monday, if you're stuck in traffic, and you will be stuck in traffic because it's the one day everybody leaves early to try to get home to be with their little kids where they go out in traffic, it's horrendous. It's not worth running over at a five-year or six-year-old to get home. So please, please, a lot of caution Monday night and as you go through your communities and your neighborhoods as you try to get home from Halloween. Anything else, Mr. County Manager?
I'm set, Mr. Chair.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.